It doesn't matter.
It makes me ill during the meeting.
I want.
Okay. I'll keep that in mind for future meetings.
We can create one.
Yes.
We'll call the meeting to order. Let's stand, face the flag, and introduce our inclined recite the pledge of allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sick?
He's in the corner.
Okay. Looks like we're all present here. Any additions, subtractions, changes of any kind?
We will have one under personnel report, under custodians. We'll remove that item for tonight. We just need to get a signature and they're out of the country, so.
Okay. With the exception, making that change, anything else? I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Brenda, on the motion.
It's the first time that we went first.
She is on the ball.
On the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. The approval of the minutes from the April 28 meeting. Does everyone have a chance to review those?
I'll make a motion to accept the motion.
Be a yes. Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Scheduled presenters. Mr. Bell, targeted services present.
The floor is yours.
All right.
And the walls.
I do have a short slideshow.
Pictures of a thousand of them.
And board members, I put some packet of papers, should be somewhere in there. It's really a series of various information that pertains to Target Services. So we go over just a few of the legislative things and some of the specifics with regards to our specific program, and then we'll open up for questions. So, and the paperwork, the first sheet is really just an overview of our summer bomber academy. The next two pages are actually a registration form that went home to families, just for your information. And the last piece is a continuous funding plan that we'll talk about in the presentation. So, to give you a little background, in legislature, it says that only sites that have the approval or access to an aerial learning center with the middle level component are allowed to tap into Target Services funding. And because GCD has opened up a middle level ALC over at In Red Wing that we can send kids to, we don't currently, right now, but we have the opportunity to, that allows us to tap into this money through the state. So this is why we jumped all over this. This is, you know, money, this program is completely funded through the state. Nothing comes out of our own budget. Again, state funded, it's a by invitation only that offers academically targeted students' extra support, but also it builds our social, emotional skills, as well as we can tie into that organizational piece that I know Tim had talked about, you know, looking at those middle school kids and helping them work on their organizational skills. What it's not, it's not homework help. The summer piece, nor any of the school year pieces, it's not about helping kids get homework, it's about targeting their specific needs and providing support for that. In a nutshell, and to tie back to something that we're familiar with, it's RTI, outside of the normal school day. It's exactly what it is. It has to be taught by highly qualified teachers. We actually have our own staff that are teaching here. So, I mean, it's a win-win for our kids and our teachers, so. So getting into specifics, that's a little bit on the state level in legislature and GCD. What we've now come up with is, we're calling it Bomber Academy. We want to give it that positive connotation. It's not a summer school. It is, but it's more targeted for that. So it's students entering first through eighth grade, or current K through seventh grade kids. We are going to run it Monday through Thursday, from eight to 11:00 in the morning, and through July, or from July 28th through August 14th. We kind of picked those dates this current summer because it coincides with our ESY program for our special population. So, some kids don't qualify for that, yet they could use extra help, so that's why we wanted to do that. And plus, it should help the transportation costs with the district, because we can be able to transport the kids at the same time. Again, transportation is included in our budget, so we're budgeting for the transportation piece, as well as breakfast and snacks for the kids. So everything is completely free to the families, and we make the effort to make sure we pick them up and drop them off. And, you know, we're hoping to keep a ratio of around, you know, 13 to 16 to 1 for staff to students. And really, with the help of, we're able to bring in some paras, and also, we've got a couple volunteers that are willing to come in through the foster catering program. So, we've got a lot of adults, so really, our ratio is much lower than that, which is only good for the kids, so. Couple other things about our Bomber Academy and about the state legislature is that parents must sign the registration form. We cannot just put the kid in there. The teachers must recommend the students to be part of the program. We cannot just throw everybody and anyone in there. So we specifically target those students that need help in those areas that I touched on earlier. But every kid must have a CLP, and that's included in your packet. It's really just a information about the kid that will follow them for at least three years. We have to keep those records on site for three years, minimally. And the teachers, you know, we had a meeting today with the teachers that are going to be teaching this, and one of the first things they asked is, do we have access to those CLPs? Absolutely they do. That's information that allows them to differentiate their instruction even more. So, and really, it's, it allows the teachers to kind of justify why they were recommended, so, to the parents in case they were questioned. But really, you know, there's a lot of flexibility with getting kids into Bomber Academy, because we can always look at that social piece, or social emotional piece, as well as the organization. We will continue during the school year, so just so you're not thinking that Bomber Academy is only a summer school program. It is not. It is an all-year program. We just chose to start it this summer. Ideally, I would have gotten it up and running earlier this school year, but it's just not, it just didn't come together quite as quickly as we wanted to. We've worked very closely with Brian Cashman at GCD, and he's helped us get the process up and running, and the application into the Department of Ed. So we're looking at possibly after-school classes, probably, you know, more so as opposed to morning classes, just because of our early start. And, you know, we're looking at two days a week, but that is still yet to be determined, and Mr. O'Keefe, who will be coming on board with us as the associate principal, hopefully he'll be taking over that. Talk more about that later. Any questions?
Derek, is that going to be separate from the ITI program?
RTI?
Yeah.
It will be. It's actually an extension of it.
When they come back in the school, is that still an extension of what's happening here during the school year? The Bomber Academy?
In the fall, I mean, during the school year. It's an extension. So every kid that's in RTI will be recommended to be in Bomber Academy.
Which is, okay.
They might not, you know, depending on parent choice, but they're the ones that are being recommended for this. So they're getting an extension of what they're learning throughout the school day. And we're going to try and differentiate as much as we can, you know, if the kids need work influencing, we're going to provide them with that influencing support. In the summer, we're able to do that much more effectively because of, you know, the amount of time we have the kids. We're going to have them for three hours, you know, per day, and you can do a lot during that time. As opposed to during the school year, after school, you know, let's say we run it three to four, you probably don't want to do much more than four, maybe three to 4:30. That still just doesn't give you a whole lot of time to do a lot, so. The summer is where we really want to target it anyway, just to help that summer slide and bridge that gap between the end of this school year and the beginning of next, and get the kids into that school mentality again, so. I'm excited about it. I think it's a fantastic opportunity to kids. This is a no-cost thing to the district. You know, it's all money generated from the Department of Ed, so might as well tap into it.
Are there any measurable outcomes, or isn't that, isn't that how you would judge this? Would you judge it more about not having the summer slide, so to speak?
Yes. Are there measurable outcomes that we need to report to MDE? No. It's all on us. You know, we will continue to look at the effectiveness of the program. You know, I'm excited already to pull out those kids that are in Bomber Academy and look at their AMES Web, their STAR, and/or NCA scores, and look to see their growth compared to the others. So we're very much, you know, hoping to be able to do that.
What kind of numbers are you looking for, or isn't there?
There's 110 kids already.
Currently, we have 110 kids already signed up for the summer piece.
Oh, wow.
We were expecting, we were hoping for 60.
We're running three bus routes to go pick everybody up.
At least.
How many were invited? Because it's by invitation only.
Yep, yep. We don't know that. We didn't actually, because it's, we just handed the, we handed out, I think 15 to every teacher, just said, you know, this doesn't go home with every kid, but, you know, fill these out for who you think would be, would qualify, and then grab more as you need. So we don't know exactly how many that would be, but, you know, I know our numbers in RTI, and I would guess we're probably about 50 to 60% are signed up. I mean, 110 kids is a fourth year school, so.
It's incredible, actually.
Giving up summer.
To know that they're going to be getting that extra dose of academics during the summer, I, how can I not be excited?
Great.
Can we get a follow-up then this fall, once you've done the summer program, to see how the program just worked this way?
Yeah, we'll have Mr. O'Keefe do that.
Mr. O'Keefe would love to do that.
This will be, this is something Derek's real excited to hand off. He's done a really good job with it, but it'll be nice to see, remember when we talked about, it's kind of some of those unfunded mandates? I mean, this is in that ballpark where it's great to have these services, but someone has to be in charge of it, so, yeah.
How do you determine when they graduate from the Bomber Academy? Is it, if it starts in the semester, in the fall, do they carry through the whole semester with the academy, or is it, and it's like, okay, you met your goals, now, you know, this isn't a program that's necessary for the student?
I think it could be really similar to what Tim does, you know, with some of his extension help with the kids, you know, that take, like Mr. Swanson's class, or something like that. You know, instead of missing two class periods, maybe they, you know, a week, they go to one, something like that. I mean, I think it's.
The criteria for qualification in Targeted Services is the same as it is for the criteria for ALC or anything like that. So, and there are 12 different criteria, and if you ask me for what, I'll tell you what those are right now, I can't tell you, but the ones that are basically going to impact our middle school and elementary school students are the low-grade level in reading and math, and then the social emotional, you know, social emotional basis.
So they probably would carry through the whole semester, then you'd do an assessment at that.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things. As long as, as long as the staff believes that they still fit that criteria, then they can still be in that program.
And one thing we haven't really discussed yet is, do we want to have the parents re-register every session? You know, because I envision us running this program right after conferences in the fall, because that gives us, the teachers, a good chunk of time to get to know the kids, and then also a chance to talk about that, about the students with their parents at conference times, and actually physically hand them the registration, saying, you know what, here's where I've noticed that your student might benefit from this program, here's a registration form if you're interested. And then running it up till Christmas, maybe, you know, or something like that. And then again, we've got conferences coming up again for elementary, at least in January, then, gives us, you know, a time to say, hey, we're going to run another session, you know, we'll run that up until spring break or something. So, again, that piece of things, we haven't really been able to focus on, we're really working on just the summer piece, but that's a lot I guess.
So what you're saying is, once enrolled, they would continually have to re-enroll, or they could just keep going as long as they fit the criteria? In every quarter or every semester, you would offer the program to new kids if you felt? Or could it be offered in between semesters? Would that work or not?
Yes, all of the above. Like I said, we haven't really given that much thought yet, but I'm just kind of thinking out loud, so.
I'm excited.
Thank you.
Ben? Thank you.
We like free kids. All of them free.
Nothing's exposed.
Okay, moving down, number six, the finance report.
Happened to be your first sheet there, be the cash flow. Some things to note on there. Started to work on the cash flow for the next fiscal year. Have to start on, but once the budget is approved, I can plug in more information, so there'll be further information here or there. Up on top, in the middle there, you're checking the account balance, 2.1 million or so. Kind of things to note on the revenue side would be the Guteu County, the property taxes will be coming in end of May, beginning of June, and then the inventory payment as well will come at the end of May, with another portion coming from the city in the middle of June. It looks like roughly, cash flow wise, cash at the end of the fiscal year would be about 2.5 million estimated right now. Next page is going to be the comparison to the last month that's been reconciled, that's April 2004 versus April 2013. As far as summary of the data here goes for general fund, we spent down the general fund about $250,000 from the beginning of the month to the end of the month, and we'll talk about that. It's really, a large portion of it has to do with retro payments for futures, almost a full calendar year's worth of retro pay, but as you see, most of the funds are pretty much where we were at this point last year, a little comparable, other than debt service, which is about $150,000 behind at this point last year. And that's because we weren't able to manually reduce our debt service levy this past year. Then also, the OPEB trust, we had withdrawn funds out of our, for other employment retirement benefits, so that is expected to be seen. Next whole page, I'm going to be the detail, if you want to see what kind of happens each month out of each of the funds. And again, really, the only thing that's going to really stick out in all the funds here for the month of April is going to be the retro pay of the teachers, and have that indicated partway down the column of the general fund there. The retro pay is 71,000 plus, and then the taxes on that, it goes to payroll ability. So, you look at the net activity of fiscal year 13 for Fund One versus O2, about $240,000 difference, we spent more in April, and a large portion of that again would be for the retro pay. Rather than having it come out all throughout the fiscal year, it all came out in April to this point, so. You know, the other funds are pretty much consistent with what happened last year. If you have any questions, I can certainly do my best to answer what you have.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report.
I'll second. Motion by Rob, seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Cut off easy there, John.
I see.
All business, consideration to approve the new members of the CF Education Foundation Attachment C. Everyone had a chance to review those? Somewhat procedural for us, they're kind of an autonomous group to some degree, but I think we followed procedure.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Brenda. I'll second. Motion by Brenda, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consent agenda items under new business. Taking a look at all three of our items on there, they're considered routine, we can enact them in one motion, or you can separate them out if you wish. Anyone have any questions on any of the items?
Just removing the one item, right?
You're removing the top custodial item, that's correct.
I'll make a motion for.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Approval of expenditures. Taking a look, would that be Attachment G?
I noticed a couple for teachers, I call a $13,000 one, and then another one. Is that usually high, or is that?
No, it's that time of year, and you've got a lot of spring staff development things going on.
Okay.
Yep. It's a little higher than usual, but it coincides real closely with end of the year, just sub-usage.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures.
I'll second.
Pretty straightforward, eh? Motion by Kurt, seconded by Rob.
Yep.
Other discussion?
I just have one question.
Sure.
Number 42179.
At the final time for the storm move for this year 14, just, I have a question too, but that total amount that I paid for the contract plus the LPO, that the end of the year was less than what we paid, we had zero dollars. It's slightly less than that total.
We came out ahead.
Slightly down.
Yeah. Ahead, we had an extra inch or so, so we just haven't snowed, that wouldn't have been, this wouldn't be there. But we did, we originally started with the zero dollars, it was like 60-some thousand. So whenever it snowed, we called and they came. We went to a two-inch this year? So when we got less than that, which we did, we called special, but it's still less than it would have been if we'd gone with zero dollars. And that's really what I was looking at, to go, was that a good call to make?
Mr. Teachers' Guide Director, right?
Yeah. So we'll be like that.
What really helped too is Dave kept immaculate notes of when he called, and why he called, and text message, I mean, he wrote whether he texted them or called them or whatever. So, kudos to Dave that that matched up really well with the bill. He did a good job with that.
Because we get the bill now, and this started in November, December.
I did talk to Zippy about that, and he is willing to do end of each month. It's more work for them, but for Josh, to try to figure out what that's going to be is just a guessing game. So, he said he'd work with us next year on it, so let's see if we can do something with that.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the fall head coaches' Attachment H.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Rob. Any other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the preliminary 1415 budget, including CE, Attachment I.
Yeah. This is just the very brief summary of it, just by fund, revenues for each fund, expenditures for each fund. I've got a five-page summary that goes by program, and then there's a 72-page, line by line, item with every code. This gets down to the very base of it. General fund, expenditures over revenues of about $400,000. And just to explain where that's going, in the revenues, there's a drop off of the $502 per pupil referendum, and that was replaced with a $300 board-approved referendum, plus we received $424 location equity for a 724. So there's an increase of revenue there in the general fund, and from where we end up at with revised 14 versus initial 15, we come in at about 300 plus, $350,000 extra revenue in the general fund. Expenditures is where we get hit a little bit, and just before we take a quick hard swallow on that, is the fund balance going into fiscal year 15 will be at about 1.5 million. With this preliminary budget, if everything were to hit all the way through, we hit all the expenditures of revenues, at the end of the fiscal year, we'd be at about $1.1 million in the fund balance at the end of 15, which I know we had some discussions that that's kind of an area where the board felt we could kind of live and manage with. Would make some decisions then for fiscal year 16 budget, and what we want to do and what would be necessary, but even when I was going through myself, and I had to sell the numbers, kind of made me choke back a little bit, but you think about the things we've done to try and catch up with some things, the teacher contract being a big one, other contracts being settled, assistant principal adding that, and any expenditure that was really necessary to the district are good things to add, but especially payroll and salary and benefits are the ones that are going to hit on a continual annual basis. So, there's some money built in there for security systems, some money built in there for technology. We got four buses that we're leasing, it's all in that budget, so I feel pretty confident with where the expenditures are at. And just so you guys have a good understanding, the fund balance will still be fairly healthy by the end of fiscal year 15. It's just at the end of fiscal year 15, we're starting to look at 16, we might have to make decisions on what we want to do, whether it's cutting or referring, or that sort of issue, but it is overspending, but it is what it is with the fund balance at the end of fiscal year, so you're kind of aware of that. Like I said, I have the detail of all this in my office, and if anyone wants to come on and look through the program, the program might be more willing to spend all that time with you. Other funds, food service, look about $12,000 deficit, and again, plugged in what may be high or what may be low for salary kind of go where it's at, and then we'll adjust from there. And Wendy does a great job of keeping control of food costs and whatnot there, so. It is again, preliminary budget, community ed, same deal there. Some things were done in contracts there to help get things to where they probably should be at, they've been kind of held back for a while, and you see a little bit of debt spending there. But again, both these funds, food service and community ed service, by the time the end of fiscal year 15 is done, they both will have positive balances. Debt service, you'll see, we'll go $104,000 extra revenue over expenditures for debt service. The reason being there is, our debt service payment is what it is. It's set, but the county collects 5% extra, they collect 105%, so you'll see an extra built in there for revenue. If we get to the end of fiscal year and we see that we have excess in debt service, we could possibly manually reduce that to bring it down to what the need is without the tax. The community as much, again, it'll be as audit gets complete, and we see where we're at the end. Trusted Agency is a scholarship fund, especially with the way interest is now, we're not pouring in a lot of interest stuff to those accounts, so that's been kind of spent down each year. Again, that fund balance will end up being about $100,000 at the end of fiscal year 15. OPEB trust, that's being paid down year by year. We take a draw, have roughly $100,000 each year to help pay for other post-employment retirement benefits, so you'll naturally see that one dip down each year until it's done. And then the OPEB debt service is a payment on that, that bonded a payment, right? So again, hopefully, kind of give you the groundwork of what's going on there. If you have any questions, either, you know, now, or you want to see in my office, I'm more willing to help anything. And again, I'll try to do my best to answer any questions you have now, please.
This is an off-year for our legislative session, but possibility, probability, or don't you want to deal with that right now?
Well, it's in my superintendent report, we can talk about it. We've been hearing a lot about a 1%, it looks like today, they're looking at $25 per student or a .4 increase, and that's as of today. So, we'll see where it all lands.
And you put a number on it, about $30,000.
Right. You know, the 1%, but it is, again, Bob alluded to it, it's a non-funding year, so to get nothing would be highly expected. So to get something, even if it is $25 per student, but, you know, I think Josh and I are sitting there hoping and figuring on $58 per student. So we'll see where everything lands, but as of today, it's $25 per student. They moved money around again to the big metro schools, and I'll go over that in my report.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary 1415 budget. Motion by Kurt.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the elementary handbook. Derek? Is that you?
Yeah, there really wasn't a whole lot of change. We obviously changed the PLC days to reflect the early outs as opposed to late starts. We are going back to bus passes to allow our secretaries to write a bus pass for students to go home, particularly our parent permission. Lunch and breakfast prices, depending on what happens here tonight. The trimesters, to reflect that we're moving to trimesters next year, and we changed the report card piece, and how parents can access that, so. So nothing really too major, but those are the highlights.
I'll make a motion to approve. Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the mandatory minimum lunch price increase of a nickel.
Yeah, this one can get really tricky. I know Lori and I have had a million conversations on this, Wendy as well, our HBL superintendents met and everyone's really all over the board on this. You've heard a lot of recent legislation on providing lunch for free for students and getting a rate of free and reduced and having it all free if you qualify. With that said, a lot of it came like, oh, let's slow down. Now we don't need to race to that magical $2.62 for a lunch price, instead let's slow down a little bit. But then the last we heard, Lori and I agree with this, is that you know, we still need to get to that magical number of $2.62 by 2016. So we're getting mixed messages on which way we should be going on this. Half of the HBL is going to just stay fast, they're going to keep their lunch prices where they're at because like us, they have a pretty good solid food program. The ones that are struggling are going to jump up that five or 10 cents. Whatever you decide to do tonight is really fine with me, just know that what's currently, and Lori stopped me if I say anything incorrectly here, if, you need to know that it does need to be at $2.62 by the end of 2016. So you can jump if they make you finally jump. I think we're hearing enough talk that that may never, ever happen. I mean, how can you force, if we have money in our accounts, how can you force us to make parents pay $2.62? Right, and that may be what happens. So you know, the idea is over the next three years, do you slowly want to get to that price? Or do you want to wait and jump at the end? Our recommendation is here, it's five cents, some districts are going 10. It's wherever your comfort zone is at.
How far away are we?
We are at what, uh, 235 right now.
So it's things to 240, 245, then we'd have to go up another 12 cents.
Seventeen.
Whatever it is, it's a big jump at one point in time.
If it comes to, you know, to reality.
And if they decide not to, then it still holds that, we can hold where we would be at.
I think there's just so many different opinions on this. I think Lori and I agree that we need to keep making motion in that direction, just in case. But I don't think any of us need to be in a race to get there. We certainly don't want to be making money in our food department. I want kids to have great meals at a great price that parents, you know, don't have to break the bank to go get, so. And you know, we are getting a little bit of conversation with the new federal regulations, kids aren't getting as much food. We increased the price and if they're kids like Rob's three boys, you know, they are getting less food and less calories and it's really a nutritious, beautiful meal, but there are some kids that are saying, you know, they're not getting as much food for more price, so.
I've heard that, and this is kind of off the beaten path with that, but how do you, how do you deal with that? I mean, you've got growing kids that really need more than what they're being served at lunch.
We've been lucky that we've got, right now you can still do à la carte, and that's going to go away really soon too. So it's going to get really interesting. You know, some kids bring a kind of a snack for the afternoon, I see kids that have got things up in their lockers and it's all very healthy food that they keep in their lockers. I've never seen a Pop-Tart box, ever. It's really weird how healthy the food is.
Just that, who drives that, at what legislative level does that decision make?
That's federal, that is not state, that is all federal. Right Lori?
Yes, that's in your attachment.
Food and Drug Administration.
It's all in there, but it's the federal components, it's not state, so.
Page nineteen in your packet, nineteen through twenty-four.
Do they have growing boys and girls on the?
I've assumed no, they don't.
Well, you know, our recommendation tonight is to do the five cents, but I completely understand if you want to modify the recommendation. I think Lori and I would be good with anything, so.
I'll make a motion to approve, because I don't want to talk on one side or the other.
I just wanted you to know the whole screening.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Good things here in our next couple, our next three. Consideration to hire Josh Olson secondary social teacher for the fourteen fifteen year.
As sad as I am to see Tony Meyer retire, you know, this was a first for me at Cannon Falls that every single person that we interviewed, the interview, the whole interview team felt like they would be great fits on our staff. And it was a really hard decision, but Josh has got great experience. He is currently teaching in the Dover Yoder School District, but he is a Cannon Falls resident. He has taught kind of the gamut of social studies, middle school, high school. He's doing a lot of college level type things in Dover Yoder right now. He's got some ALC experience, he's got some really great technology background. So he, you know, fit all of the criteria that we wanted great right up the bat. So I think he'd be a great addition to our staff, plus he's known by lots of people on staff too, so he was a candidate. So what's up, can you accept it? He accepted.
Yeah, he accepted very happily. He was so excited.
I used to hear you say that.
I know. It hasn't happened.
Tim didn't know what to do.
Do you again?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brenda.
Approve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob to approve Josh's hire. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to hire Matt Addington elementary art teacher for the fourteen fifteen school year. Derek?
Yeah, well, you know, we had really great interview candidates and Matt is coming to us. You know, he's actually a Cannon Falls resident as well and you know, he's got, comes to us with experience, but really his enthusiasm for teaching art is really what stood out in my mind. You know, he's got amazing technology abilities that I think will enhance the staff and everything that we do at the elementary and just a fun guy and I think he'll fit in well, so we're excited to have him.
And he's coming from, can you want me to go, correct?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. And the third of our hires here, consideration to hire Michael O'Keefe. Now, we had a teacher named O'Keefe here.
Oh, he's O'Keefe.
Just so we get that square. Associate principal for the fourteen fifteen school year. Maybe we can ask the gentleman to introduce himself.
Good evening, everybody. As our chairperson said, I'm Michael O'Keefe, I am coming from Rosemount. I currently teach in District 196, been in education for fifteen years. And I interviewed with these lovely people and fell in love immediately with the whole bomber tradition. And I'm super excited to join the Cannon Falls family, so thanks for having me.
And that really is why we picked him.
Because he called you lovely?
He just kept telling us how nice we were.
That was the greeters, Lori and I.
You know, it was good, I just have to tell a really quick little side story. There was a discipline issue, of course you've got all the principals in here, me, we're all taking, you know, we're interviewing and all of a sudden there's a discipline issue and they thought Tim was gone, so they bring him down here, but I could handle it and they come into the office and poor Michael thought it was part of the interview. Like, oh, they want me to hop in maybe and help with this.
Fight or rage.
With this discipline issue.
Ready to go, I said, this is real life.
Real life on the spot. But no, in all seriousness, we had amazing candidates. We had almost fifty-some apply and we interviewed eight. And it was very obvious to us that he, that that family feel that we've talked about. It's more than just being an administrator here, it's about putting up with me and Derek and Tim and wearing a lot of hats. And every single thing that we asked him, he was willing to do or would find out how to do it or whatever. So we're really excited, he's a great candidate.
You've got to keep asking until he says no.
Right, yeah. And he talked about world's best workforce.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to hire. Jerry, Jerry made it, you seconding?
I'll second, sure.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. We're very pleased to have you.
I'd like to just say thank you very much.
Item J, consideration to approve a medical leave beginning June 30th for eight weeks.
Yep, you know, this works out really well, it's someone on our custodial crew and that works out really well with it being summertime, you know, we have summer help that comes in, so good timing on this person's surgery.
I'll make a motion to approve that leave.
Motion by Rob, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consideration to approve the fourteen sixteen principals contract.
Yeah, they were probably the hardest group to work with, but we did make it through and we got negotiations done. You know, we kind of followed suit on this one, we didn't add much of anything. The big thing is that they wanted to add more to their 403B, we thought that was important and they thought it was important. So they'll be going from 1,500 matching to 3,000 in matching and that's real common in all principal contracts. So we're excited for that and we're thankful that they're willing to work for us again next year.
What's max on that, that you can contribute?
That.
That's it right there?
And it's matching, you know.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Brenda. Further discussion? What were the percentages, four and four?
Four and four.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the fourteen sixteen LPN contract.
The biggest thing there is we are taking apart the LPN and the tech, they're separate now. We will have an LPN or LPN on her own contract, no language changes, no anything, three and three.
I'll make a motion. Motion by Jerry, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Enter the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the fourteen sixteen tech aid contract.
Again, we're changing this up pretty dramatically actually, hers has many different language changes. If you need to see any of them, I know most of you have seen the contract, if you need to see it, let me know, I can email it to you. Our leave year one will be seventeen sixteen, year two is eighteen eighty-seven. Not really a percentage of change because it's a new contract. We're going to start completely fresh and make that a kind of a new, a new position of sorts.
What was your two?
Eighteen eighty-seven.
Thank you.
And just keep in mind that this is, someone has a four-year degree and you know, knows a lot about IT, so.
And this was on the, before it was tied to the LPN?
Before it was LPN, which made no sense, this person needs to be in an 11-month contract and it makes no sense to be on a student contract day, so.
Yeah, she had, she had LPN pay pair of benefits and she really wasn't either of those.
And followed the secretarial days off.
Yeah, the secretarial days off.
It was tough.
It was one of those situations where, that we've run into in the last couple of years, we kind of had to get her pulled into where she should be.
I worked really hard on hers, hers took a lot of time, but importantly, I mean, it's good to have it on a different contract.
Pat, you entered in on that, thank you very, for your help. So look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Kurt?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the fourteen sixteen food service employee contract.
Yeah, we did a few minor things there, their clothing allowance, you can't get taxed for it. They wanted that kind of switched around where they can get their, they have to bring in a receipt now and get reimbursed that way. We did that, three and three was on the salary, some small language changes made things a little more kosher, believe it or not. They were still, and Lori's shaking her head because we found things in their contract that they hadn't sat down in a really long time and really gone through the whole thing. And so that's what we did this time and it was, it was worth it, we cleaned it up a lot, just small things that used to be a certain way. They pushed really hard and really wanted lead cooks back and some of you may remember that, Bob? The day when we used to have lead cooks and we, you know, from the district side, we just really thought that we've got Wendy in charge of that and to have her do that was really important, she runs a great ship and so we stuck our grounds on that. But other than that, it was a really good negotiations and I think they feel good about their contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the food service employee contract.
Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Item O, consideration to approve the recommissioning study proposal.
Yeah, I'm not, I'll let Jerry and Rob pop in at any point here. We, this is what I recommended to you a couple of years ago, my first year as superintendent. We talked a lot about doing a recommissioning study. I brought in an organization, you may or may not remember them, CTS. And they talked about the different rebates that you can get through Excel to get this recommissioning study does, get it done. What this recommissioning study would do is tell you, you know, kind of where your deficiencies are, where you can get more money back. You know, other superintendents have really used this as a tool when looking at, you know, fixing things. There's other ways to do that, a lot of people like to use a recommissioning study because it's all in one binder and all of your information's at your fingertips. So we had already proposed that a couple of years ago with that company. We decided to kind of go on our own, see what we could do without hiring someone to do it, but it was good information to get. In the meantime, we've now come around and McKinistry has come through and again, we filled out the application to just see what a recommissioning study would cost us to do. You see the numbers here, it has dramatically changed since the last time. I'm not sure why or what changed, but our numbers are very different. The cost study altogether is $66,000, the rebate this time was only $12,700. We just don't qualify for as much and a lot of that is some things that Dave has done, some things that anytime we've replaced something new, we've done, we've obviously gone with energy efficiencies and things like that. It's, no one's, no one did anything differently, it's just how the rebate came out this time. So the cost after rebate is going to be $54,000. I will let Jerry and Rob say and I promise I'll stop talking after this, but at this point, to spend money on a recommissioning study, it just, it isn't the right time, in my opinion. But I'll let both of you kind of talk about your opinions on it.
You know, you're saying you don't think it's the right time?
I don't think spending $54,000 to get that recommissioning study right now, I think we should wait at least a year and see if the rebates go up. Because when I've talked to Excel about the rebates and you know, last time I was coming in at 23, 24,000 and this year coming in at 12,700, how did it change so much in two years? It tells me that I think in a couple of years it might go up again, I'd rather wait.
Because those numbers shift around from Excel all the time, just depends on the year and what their hot item is.
Right, and I, you know, the application is long and cumbersome, but I think you should have me do that a couple of times a year. I don't want to necessarily, but I think that if we keep applying, we're going to hit it one time, but it's just going to be higher than usual. And there's no regulation on how many times you can apply for those rebates. So I just think right now is not the right time to do that, but.
The first, first time they came around, the rebate amount was.
Was twenty-two, right, almost twenty-three, I could look and find that for you.
Even, even say twenty-two-five, that's almost, it's not quite half of what they're on for now.
Sure.
I, I.
And the study cost.
I would love to see recommissioning study done.
I would too.
I guess with that being the case and we're going to, we're losing that much money, over 10 grand. I would say, I wouldn't be adverse to tabling it for a year to re-review it. That's my opinion on it, Rob, but.
You know, we haven't talked about this at all, about the tabling or not, so you know, I saw the numbers, I don't like the numbers, but timing almost seems good. I mean, a third set of eyes, an outsider looking at this facility, completely in the neutral aspect. I mean, something we, I think we should do. Whether it be done today or six months, the only thing I don't know, and this is of course the unknown question, is the sooner we start, do we start saving money sooner, would that actually help with this rebate difference? I don't know. And if we wait a year and it doesn't change, do we just lose a year of potential getting the recommissioning study done and then possible savings afterwards by just delaying the process? study done and then possible savings afterwards by just delaying the process? There's no answer to it. It's just, I'm throwing those ideas out to go. Twelve thousand is a lot, but what's our potential savings if we do move forward? Get a recommission study done this summer and then?
And I guess my question to McInisterie would be, right, what I fail to understand is we haven't added new equipment? I mean, not large volume, have we, Dave? We've made big changes since last, we had the study done.
Other than the construction, have we added more equipment?
Right.
That was already done before that first CTS came through, yeah.
I, I guess I'm a little perplexed why the, the difference is what it is.
When I call, cause I wanna make sure it wasn't the two companies. And the way Excel explained it to me is they have nothing to do with this. This is absolutely nothing to do with them. So, it's just a timing thing and.
So, I don't know that we need to put it out for a year because I, I agree with Rob. I think, personally, I don't think fifty-four thousand is a bad number because I think that's easily recoupable in savings. But if it's, you're right, the, the XL rebate actually does bother me quite a bit. That ten grand is.
Would we, would we?
But I, I also agree with you because I know there's area, there's problem, areas within the buildings that need to be addressed and the sooner they get addressed, some of that possibly could come out of health and safety to make it, be able to address it, but.
I just don't know if we need, if we can rely on when the rebates are gonna be there. I think if we have issues at the building, which we don't know, if this is something that should be done, I think we just need to start doing that stuff.
Can I make a suggestion? I would like to table it for a month and give me a little bit of time to ask some questions cause I deal with McInisterie, some, and I deal with Excel a little bit.
And you send my email to them.
Go us around. Let me just do some, I'll try to pick some brains with, with those companies and see.
I don't think a month or two is bad at all. I mean, the recommission stay is gonna take a while to do as well. Cause that, we were just, when we approved it, they've still gotta come in and go over all the facilities and then we get the binder after they put all that data together, so it's a, it's a process that's gonna take a while.
Yeah, and if you can report here, they basically say, you know, it's almost like a ten-month process. Because they gotta hit the season, you gotta hit the air conditioning, you gotta hit the heating just to get the true reading. So, it's about ten months process.
So, they've been coming in on billing quite often, Dave?
Yeah, it's not, come in for two weeks, three years and here we go.
That's why, I mean, the cost is there. I, I think the benefit is good to have like a third set of eyes looking at this facility systematically from end to end, top to bottom. It's needed, but yeah, timing is one.
Right.
So, what would be your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion to table it for a month and let me do some, little bit of, I don't know, discovery might not be the right word, but I just wanna do some review with McInisterie.
I'll second with Excel.
Thank you for doing it, Jerry.
There's a motion by Jerry to table it. And the second came from Rob. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Reports? Board members? Kurt, would you like to wait for the committee reports? We had a finance committee, should we?
Yeah.
Any, any board members have anything for the cause?
I would like to see in the near future, an update on the GCEE building.
Brenda is on that, she meets with them a lot. We are having, you've probably heard, I'm not sure why you're asking this question, though.
I haven't heard anything, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, we are running into a little snag. They were supposed to be tonight, you would have been approving the joint powers agreement. That is not complete. There are parts in it that don't protect Cannon Falls and Kenyon and Mango, Zambroda and Goodhue. There's parts in it that favor Red Wing and I'm not comfortable with it. Our lawyer's not comfortable with it. They are working on that language. I know no one's at fault. We're just, I'm not gonna sign something that our community is going to pay for that doesn't protect us and it's just really important that we do that. So, it was supposed to be tonight. You did get an email that they maybe have requested a special session. I don't know if we need to do that. They may just have to wait for our June twenty-third board meeting to get that approval. I'm not, you know, we'll, we'll have to see where you're all at and see when things are done, so. That's where we're at. We can have them come, there's no changes in the building, if that's what you're referencing. The funding and how we're gonna get this building done has changed a little bit. You need to make sure that joint powers agreement, when I present it to you, is perfect and it protects Cannon Falls. Why rush something if it's not quite right?
We have a board meeting this Thursday, so if you have any questions, I can.
What's the projected done date?
Two thousand six, start of the two thousand sixteen quarter.
Really?
Okay.
I thought it was two thousand fifteen.
And that's what I thought, that's what I asked, cause I haven't heard anything.
It is, it is fifteen sixteen. I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, fifteen sixteen.
Fifteen months from now.
And they have had to cut, Brenda, tell me if I'm wrong on this, they cut the playground and the parking lot is now, they're just gonna use the Red Wing parking lot until they have enough money saved up for their parking lot. And then they made the class sizes down to six hundred and fifty square feet instead of the seven fifty. So, the room sizes were small.
I thought they were very opposed. I think the one meeting I went to, that was one of their concerns was the size of classrooms. It was really.
I'll find out more on Wednesday. That's kind of our update and then they'll meet as a board on Thursday, but there's some changes, but that's any new building. You remember that when we went through our new building too, so.
But they haven't, so you're really looking at fifteen months out, right?
And the joint powers agreement is not ready.
And they haven't broke ground yet. That's, it makes me a little bit nervous that completion won't be done in time, but that's just me. That's okay, that's, that's not my responsibility, that's not, we're our responsibility.
We haven't held anything up, so we're, we're doing well.
I just haven't heard nothing for a long time and I talked to.
It's a great question.
There's, there's not really much. People that are involved in it, the districts, and they're like.
Yep. I wish I had it here for you tonight, I really do.
No, that's okay. I just haven't heard that for a long time, so.
Anything else, board members?
Yeah, I was at the band concert the other day, steel drums. And that section over there by the, where the steel drums are, you know, we could decorate that up to be more like a steel drum place. I know they gotta deaden it cause it's the, the brick walls. Maybe more like a hut or something or.
Palm trees.
Yeah!
We just got a comment from Nora.
Nora, Nora, how do you feel? Hey, every time I hear him, I wanna have a Corona.
All right, all right. Let's pull him back in. Student reports. Brian, what's new?
Sure. First, I would like to start out by saying last Wednesday, we had the academic awards at the school here. And according to Ms. Keys, sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars was distributed throughout the senior class, so, I mean, coming from a town this size, it's really amazing, so, that was great. If I have it right, last Thursday was the band concert, is that right? Okay, yep, last Thursday was a band concert.
Steel drums too.
Steel drums.
Need a hut.
And then again, if I have my facts right about sports, cause the weather has been really a tis me lately, but softball, I think they had three games last week. Hayfield on Monday, Stewartville on Tuesday, and I think Thursday, Cassin. Cause they, they really have been trying to squeeze all these games in so that, so that they can qualify for subsections, is that right? Okay. And then their, their game was rescheduled to tomorrow versus Byron Track. This past Saturday, they hosted their HBL conference championship. The women plays sixth, the men's plays eighth. And then Tuesday, so tomorrow, they are competing in subsections at Medford. And then sections for them is May twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth at Winona. For baseball, this past Saturday, they played against Randolph and they won ten to nothing, so that was pretty exciting one to be at. The HBL championship game was scheduled for tonight, but it was canceled. So, they begin subsections on Thursday. This Friday, the senior class, whoever signed up will be going to Valley Fair. So, that's one of the things that's been kind of on our bucket list, I guess, to kind of achieve that before we graduate, so.
You should've seen how we presented this to me in the hallway.
Bucket list.
Oh, with the big eyes, Ms. Keys. We've never gone to Fielder, ever.
I do understand, I do understand that, that we don't as a school do that anymore because it's like a seventh grade thing, but, but I think it's more fun to go as a senior class, so that's why.
Or did you just wanna go back to the seventh grade and start over? It's just like we were seventh grade.
That's okay. So, uh, let's see, we have a choir concert on Wednesday, just for the high school.
Wednesday or Thursday, I think it's Thursday.
Uh, it's Wednesday. Uh, I think middle school is Thursday.
Thursday's, yeah.
And tomorrow night's a middle school band.
Thank goodness for board meetings.
Steel drums too.
You're welcome. Graduation will be next Friday, the thirtieth.
That's what postponed is no one told you. Till after Valley Fair.
No, no, no. We need to add an extra day, no. Then we'll be out of here, unfortunately. Really unfortunately.
Well, you're coming to the next meeting though, right, June?
Yeah, no, I will talk about that though. And then we have been, I've kind of been relieved of my student, my student council duties. We elected the new board, but I am continuing to work on the crest for official purposes that we talked about. Here we pass on. These are just rough sketches that, I don't know if you know how hard her shades, but she's been working on the rough sketch that you see there of the crest that we've been working on. And there's a lot of things that go along with that. And I know we talked about the, the words around the edges and those, those currently on there can be modified. They're just on there right now just to show where they're, where they would go. We also talked about having three words on there, which obviously that can also be, something that can be modified along with that. But, and then we also talked about getting the school involved in choosing the words that we think best represents our school, so I think something that we're going to do is we're going to get the school lantern involved and we're gonna have some kind of a survey to do it that way. If you guys think that sounds like a good idea. And I, I'll be continuing to work on this for the rest of the school year. I'll be happy to come back for your June twenty-third board meeting to share any more progress we have. It's, because I do think it's gonna be more of an ongoing thing to make sure everything's right. And I mean, there's legality things as well that we need to take into consideration. Making sure not stealing any logos or symbols from anybody and that can all be cleaned up once we get farther in the process, but that's what we have so far, so.
How many days are left before you graduate?
Yeah. I think it's, what is it, seven, seven, six? I don't, I'm not, I'm not keeping track, you know?
Does Friday count as a day?
He's done.
I am pretty much just the.
And he literally is student council.
AP tests and stuff, so.
So, you guys can take your survey on the bus ride up to Valley Fair.
What's that? Oh, yeah, I'll be working all the way up, yeah.
Looks good.
What's that?
Oh, I thought you said something.
Yeah, I said a lot of seniors appear to have been relieved of their duties.
It happens every year about this. Looks good. Keep going.
Yep, we will be.
Thank you. Jake, the gold blue thing that's, that goes down the river, baseball?
Baseball game, yeah, will be made up. Tomorrow's supposed to be the makeup day, but Lawrence has a commitment, so they can't play it.
We beat them head to head, I think we should have that.
I think so too.
Yeah. That's two goals.
I say so.
Okay.
Okay. Upcoming meeting, next regular board meeting, June twenty-third. You can see the list. We have plenty of things to do there and we'll add that recommissioning. It doesn't necessarily have to be on there as you get it completed, that's, we'll take our lead from Jerry on that. Public forum. Anyone wish to speak to the cause?
I would like to just publicly thank the players for all the work on the academic award ceremony. She does a remarkable job. This is a really busy time of year for her getting that ready and getting graduation ready. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate the fact that all I do is she hands me a stack of things and says, this is what you need to do and sets me on my way. So, thank you, Doug, for all of your hard work and everybody really appreciates all the time and effort you put into, into these two events especially.
Okay, duly noted, thank you.